Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, October the 4th. We welcome you here today. Glad that we have a nice crowd here tonight. Glad to have you. As we normally do, we will come up in just a few minutes for a moment of silence and we'll have our pledge allegiance. Before we get to that, I would like for you to keep your thoughts and prayers for a number of things that we have in our community. Obviously Hurricane Ian who had came through our country, you know, this past week. Please continue praying for the families in Florida and Georgia, South Carolina, all the way into North Carolina. We had a lot of devastation everywhere and please pray for those families and as they will try to recover from this. And we're sorry for so much loss of life and everything that happened. Terrible, terrible time that was happening there. So keep those in your thoughts and prayers, please. We also would like to, keeping our thoughts and prayers tonight, Mr. Bill Johnson. Bill is, was the, a member of the city council, the council of the village of Cedar Rock, also an owner at Cedar Rock, a longtime businessman here in our community, furniture industry, Grand Manor Furniture. Bill was an avid worker for this community, was part of the Caldwell UNC Health Board of Directors for many years and the Caldwell UNC Health also, the Foundation Board of Directors, which he served as, as a board member of Meredith's to that. But Bill just gave a lot to our community and he will be sorely missed in our community. So please keep the family of William, Bill Johnson, in your thoughts and prayers also as we go to this time. So if you would please, let's rise.
Bill's in.
What's that?
Are you showing me Bill Johnson?
I will. And we have our moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you. Please solidify. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a special recognition that we're going to do tonight. Our Director of Public Works, Mr. John Hogan, recently ran a 100 mile run from, in Damascus, Virginia during a time of hurricane, I think, and rains were coming through. John, we're glad you're back with us. I tell you what, that's, that's quite an accomplishment. We've got a couple of things there that Joshua is going to, to show us there from John's run and everything, finished it all, all the way. And we, there's a map you're gonna see in a few minutes. You're gonna see how far that really was, so.
Yeah, so 100 miles in 26 hours, 43 minutes and 33 seconds.
Wow, that's, that is amazing. There's a map showing from Lenore how far we'd run. I think that was like Greensboro.
That's a 100 mile radius from Lenore, so you could get to Greensboro or into Virginia or out of May to South Carolina.
So.
In one day.
In one day.
That's amazing.
John, congratulations. Anything you want to tell us about it?
I just felt like running.
He'd come home.
I told, I told him you needed to have a picture of Forrest Gump up there. He's just running.
Running.
Well, we, thank you for doing that. I know you, I know you enjoyed it. I know you were tired. I think some friends ran with you.
Yeah.
And did you beat the friend or?
Well, we wanted it to be a tie. And I even pushed him in front of me and said, you know, you all let him have it this year because he didn't finish last year and I did. But it still ended up me up front, so whatever.
Well, congratulations again and proud that you represented us so very well.
Absolutely.
That was, it sounded like it was a lot of fun.
When I get that feeling to run, I usually go to the kitchen or something.
Yeah, me too. I run to the refrigerator. That is great. We've got a, also this is, I'll bring you, make you aware, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That's why we're wearing the pink ribbons there. The month of October is that. So we were over at the Laurel Park today with an open house and they were honoring all the things that they do for breast cancer awareness for this month. So please keep that also in your thoughts and prayers as well for them. All right, we will move on into our matter scheduled for public hearing this evening. Our first is, out of May is an ordinance. This is a conditional zoning district. This is, hearing is to consider adoption of a proposed conditional zoning district for property located at Lowe's rear entrance drive off of McLean Drive to be rezoned from R12, that's medium density, single family, to CZ9, that's conditional zoning, to allow for a multi-phase residential development featuring attached and detached dwellings while preserving green space and environmentally sensitive areas. The planning board recommends, recommends approval based on the consistency statement, which is as follows. The proposed conditional zoning district is consistent with the land use policy concepts in the comprehensive plan that call for distinctive neighborhoods that preserve open space, enhance walkability, and accommodate a range of housing types. Use stormwater measures as community amenities and foster a strong sense of place. The proposed development is consistent with the future land use map, which identifies the parcel as medium density residential and mixed use with commercial. While commercial uses aren't proposed, the densities and mix of housing types proposed are consistent with a larger area accommodating a mix of uses. The rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides much-needed housing at a variety of densities at an appropriate scale near the US 321 Commercial Corridor. Okay, and our, our planning director Jenny Wheelock is, is here as well for, to any, answer any questions. I will open the public hearing and I will open it up. Jenny, I will let you make some statements first, if you will.
Okay.
And then we'll open it for anyone who would like to speak with us.
All right, so I have just two slides, because I thought it might be helpful to kind of put it in context based on how the planning board meeting went. It was very, very well received and the board did recommend approval, but some of the questions that came up. So this subject property is the area beside Lowe's and behind Lowe's. It's the area we've always contemplated for residential. It's currently zoned R12. When Huntington Woods came through, that was approved as phase one of a three-phase project that would have other housing types and this type of thing. But the way it was approved was very vague and it's nothing I could carry forward, you know, from 2007 to now. It's 157 acres vacant land. And what's before you tonight is the conditional zoning district CZ9 that will allow for phased residential development and in addition to the single family that's normally allowed in R12, it adds in some other housing types, some of that missing middle housing. We hear so much about attached dwellings, there's zero lot line dwellings, or even possibly a multifamily kind of garden apartment type of project. So in the staff report and the materials provided by the applicant and the concept plan, you'll see some pretty specific, like there's, there's roads and there's lots, but that's kind of inspirational more than regulatory at this point is to illustrate, you know, we're getting to what could be developed, but the preliminary plat is the next phase. That's really where these details get all figured out. So we're basically going from R12 zoning, which is like the blank napkin, to CZ9 zoning, which is like the sketch on a napkin kind of thing. It's starting to, to base out where different types of development can go. So R12 today, without going before the board at all, except for with a preliminary plat, it's allowed to have single-family detached housing. The setbacks are established, you know, 40, 12, and 30. And it can go 3.6 dwelling units an acre. Now, if you do the math on what I say, 157 acres times 3.6 dwelling, there's a lot of housing. In our transportation planning and long-range planning, we've always contemplated that a lot of housing could go here. Probably not, I should have done this math, 3.6 times 157 is too complicated for me to do on the fly here, but, you know, basically three times that. Probably the other limiting factors, you're probably not going to max out at that amount. But you're talking about quite a bit of housing. With the CZ9 proposal that's in front of you, you know, this is still zoning, it's still conceptual, we still have to do the engineering behind, you know, what our plans are going to be. But it would accommodate detached housing and attached, you know, single and multifamily, reduces some of the setbacks. Still 3.6 dwelling units an acre, but it allows for like density clusters. So we can have 30% open space across the development, at least 10% of open space in each section of the development. So our steep slopes, our alluvial areas, they can be kind of protected in that. The trade-off is smaller lots, higher density little clusters. So one little sub area might be much denser than 3.6 dwelling units an acre. So we've got different parameters now to, to plan around. There's a concept plan in your packets. It's full color, they don't record well. This is a black and white version of it, is maybe even simplified a little bit further. This is what we would propose to record with the ordinance if you adopt it tonight as Exhibit B. But this is essentially, this is the single-family section and some preliminary road layout showing that there needs to be connectivity to this neighborhood and there needs to be a second connection point. Here is section, what, section one here, this is like the tallest part, some of the densest proposals. There's some semi-detached type of development here, proposed zero lot line or maybe some townhomes. Up here would be maybe multifamily or more denser townhome development. Section three is kind of a combination of both, single-family, possibly kind of in the lower areas, maybe going a little denser with multifamily. These are details that need to continue to be worked out with what the market conditions are, what the, the final engineering is coming back when they get really good surveys, grading plans, things like that can be developed in phases. We're talking about the same amount of development outward, you know, impacts on the community. We're just sort of, we have a little bit better idea of where it may be going. Greenway is a feature of this, is proposed to run through the middle. This is like the low-lying area, there's kind of intermittent stream that comes up there and the developers here in the audience, and I'm sure that he'll want to say a few words and kind of talk about his concept, but it's, it's a pretty neat development concept for, around sort of the green space and the natural features and the history of the area. When this comes back through for preliminary plat, say we're going to do section two, at that point, all the information about like how we're going to serve these with utilities, where is those going to go, what side of the stream is the greenway going to go on? You know, the exact point where the driveway connection may come or the road connection to McLean Drive, the widths and those types of plans would be developed in conjunction with the preliminary plat. That goes to a technical review committee, it's made up of staff, then it goes to planning board for review, then it comes to this board for review approval, then they construct the infrastructure, and then they come back through to council one more time for, for a final plat. So there's this kind of first bite at the apple side. So we haven't done a lot of phased developments like this, I just wanted to kind of clarify where we're at with everything. That's kind of all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions that come up, you know, I can come back up and the ordinance and the staff report should be in your packet.
Okay.
And we're recommending approval.
Thank you very much. And the developers are here, so if, we are in the public hearing, if anyone would like to address the council from the developers right now, that would be fine, if you have anything you'd like to say. If you will, if you don't mind, give us your name and address so we can have it for the records.
Yeah, I'm David Walker with Hybriteon Construction. I'm, I live in 1555 Dula Town Road in Lenore. And this, this is a project, I think it really shows how to develop a piece of property where the land tells you how it should be developed, instead of us forcing a development into a, into a piece of property. We're trying to find the way that this property can be developed in the most responsible manner. Hence, we have the, the greenway through there, preserving and protecting that stream that runs through there. The idea is to have larger lot sizes so that we can maintain the forest to a great extent. In the part that Ms. Wheelock pointed out was the highest elevation, which is directly behind Lowe's and we have all seen it back there. It's cleared off, it's been cleared off for a long time, it's semi-level up there. The views up there are outstanding. There, it's just, it's simply one of the most gorgeous vistas in the county. It's just absolutely gorgeous up there. And that would be the most densely developed area, but still within the 35-foot limitation that's outlined in the, in the zoning. And those places would be, you know, feature things like rooftop, outdoor living spaces and, and nice porches to take advantage of those vistas. We've had some early talks with fire and rescue, just to make sure that we're, as we go into our design, that we're being sensitive to, you know, getting vehicles in and out of there. So we're trying to look at that. We've got a variety of, of housing types in this development. So we've got sort of apartment-style condo-style living. We have the zero lot line, single level living for seniors, especially not to say that only seniors could rent or could not rent, but purchase those, but, but anybody can purchase them. They would be suitable for a family starting out and be suitable for, you know, seniors looking for those kinds of accommodations that they look for. And then we have sing, traditional single-family housing as well, with sizable lots and access to the greenway. So I think it's a, it's a really nice fit for Lenore. It'll, it'll be, it's a, it's a big project, it's going to take some time, but this is the first step that we need to get, get this going and, and we're really, we're excited to be at this point. I've got some photos and things like that, if you guys want me to share them, but I'm happy to answer any questions or.
Let's see if anybody would like that, we'll, we'll check on that, on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we're in the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this, this is the time to do so. If you'll please come forward and give us your name and address on that.
I guess I might as well come on, Bill.
Okay, well, come on.
My name's Ed Trivett and I live at 1138 Hybriteon Drive.
Okay.
I live beside where the new road's going to come off the hill. Nobody wants that road. It's going to be a mess. We got all kind of water coming all the way down the crest of the hill on Hybriteon Drive down by Mr. Seacrest's yard, Travis's, and then mine. I'm the last one on the thing. And it's like a river comes down through there. When the guys put the road in, they're going to have to put culvers under that road and I'm going to be flooded. And I don't want it and I'm not going to have it. But these are some nice folks here. I've ate with them, talked with them, you're not going to find better people. But that road is a bad idea. The road needs to go in behind Lowe's, the road's already there, circle behind Lowe's and come out on the south side of Lowe's. They'll have a circular road through there and they're not going to mess up the folks on Hybriteon Drive. I mean, it's, it's like a racetrack through there anyway. And when they put that road going into Hybriteon Drive, it's going to have to be spread out. Somehow or another, I don't know what the plan is, but you know, even last night, there's a wreck up by our neck of last night, there's numerous wrecks and it's going to be even worse. He said something about putting a, a gate there with a key pad, you know, somebody's going to come down there and tear it down. And then I'm going to be stuck with a mess. I'm the one that cleared that whole mess from top of the hill all down to Hybriteon Drive. I bought a tractor and I cleaned it up for Duke Power. And now they're going to come and screw it back up. And I promise you, you know, if you put a road down there, it ain't going to work. And another thing, I told these guys, they've got pictures of some of my flowers. Behind those flowers, when Duke Power cleared that, they dug a big hole with bulldozers. They pulled the bulldozers down in there, changed oil, hydraulic fluid on four or five, pulled them out, put brush on top of that and covered it with dirt. When it comes to hard rain, in that hole, the water can't go anywhere. There's a place about that big around and it'll shoot water up that high off the ground and it stinks real bad. It stunk so bad that I thought years ago my sewer was messed up. Cost me $2,000 to dig my yard up, put a new sewer line in, and it wasn't. It was that mess Duke Power laid and left. So when you come in there with the road, you're either going to sink in the sinkhole or you're going to mess all that crap up and it's coming down in my yard again and I'm not going to have it. I've got a tractor with a loader. I will put it back. It comes in my yard, it's going back. I've got a dump truck, I have a tractor with a loader, I will put it back. Fair enough.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Mike Seacrest, 1114 Hybriteon Drive.
Okay.
I'm basically the same thing. Hybriteon Drive, I don't know, I live right on it. It's very busy, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 to 7:00 at night. I can't go to the mailbox and you've got to put that road in a curve right there, too. And people have a hard enough time getting out of Hybriteon Estates across the road. They, they're scared to death because they, they can't see around their pine trees they planted, which is a terrible mess. But that's what I'm mainly concerned with is the traffic and they're coming out and you can't make a left turn before you're putting this road coming out. You can't do it, you get hit. Travis can't make a left turn coming out of his driveway. He has, he goes out always to the right.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just worried about, like I say, we had a wreck. I have people that have ran my yard several times, run off the road because they, they'll hit that straight, stretch going in the curve and they'll speed up. So I'm just, it's busy enough, that's all, you know, somebody will get hit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Come up.
Cliff Anderson, 1130 Hybriteon Drive. Just a couple of questions and we've had lunch, thanks for lunch the other day, it's great. So when, when is the first phase going to start and is it going to start at phase one, two, three, or to decide yet, do you know?
Well, we haven't got.
You'll have to come up here if you want to answer.
I'm sorry, okay. So, okay, well, let's go back to the entrance thing. That's the main thing everybody's concerned about is the entrance off Hybriteon Drive as they're all talking about. It's, it's bad in the curve. Many times you have to stop there to let people by, you know, trucks, buses, everything. Putting that entrance in there is not a great idea, but the bigger question is, according to this little drawing right here, as Ed mentioned, there's a southern entrance up at Lowe's. They currently use for motocross entrance right now, all the motorcycles come in there and four-wheelers and trucks and they come up and ride all through the, you know what I'm talking about, everybody's seen it and they put boulders actually there to try to deter that and failed. But that's a great place for the second entrance, right there. I mean, it's, kind of makes sense to everybody, it's right there off 321 and there you come in right off the top. And that's actually Paul's land, Royal Hill Temple Resources. So it's doable and we're trying to understand why that won't be entertained. Also the greenway, where it was going to come in at my house, that totally needs to be changed and we covered that and I think they probably will address that maybe at some point. Do I need to come up here and talk to you guys or are you going to talk about changes or have you made any changes?
That's, that's entirely, if you want to answer, you can.
So. Excellent. As far as the timeline for the project, I mean, we've, you know, we've got to go through a sequence of steps. There's, of course, this meeting is part of that. There's a lot of engineering to do, there's permitting to do, there's, there's surveying to do. So there's a lot of work. Like I said, there's a lot of work to do. I can't give a, a hard time for when this is going to, you know, when dirt's going to start moving. I mean, we got, there's a lot of things to, to get done before that happens.
The last thing I would say is Ed's right about the bulldozers. We saw them all do that and it's an EPA nightmare.
Back to the microphone.
I'm sorry. It is an EPA nightmare out there, but you'll run into it whenever you run into it. I just want to confirm that.
Well, yeah, and, you know, I can't, I can't speak to what Duke Power did or didn't do. I don't have any idea about that. And as far as the location of the greenway, I mean, as Ms. Wheelock pointed out, we've got to go through a process to make sure that we're, you know, adhering to where that needs to be located. I know Mr. Cliff was very concerned in one of our preliminary drawings, we had a parking area there that's been deleted. Actually, it's been moved out to McLean Drive to address his concerns on that. It's a valid concern. As far as the, having another entrance out on 321, that was, that, the piece of property at its point's cost prohibitive for us to purchase for the express purpose of having a driveway. So, you know, we feel, yes.
Okay.
So we feel like this is the, this is the best location. Of course, any kind of connections to roads, we have to go through DOT's process for that to happen anyway, so there's a lot of work to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Jenny, do you have anything you'd like to say at this time?
I was just going to clarify with, with having to go through DOT permitting, you know, this, this parcel has frontage on Hybriteon Drive, so they have some right to ask for that connection. You know, it's not really before the board tonight to, I mean, you could put a condition to prohibit that connection. I think we'd have some fire access issues, you have to have two points of access, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the road as it is today is the way that it's going to be with the way DOT permits that connection. There could be geometric changes that are required to make it safe to connect in for that number of trips. So I can see where, when you look at it today and say, okay, well, if this is the exact situation and then we're just going to connect this driveway to it, that may be unsafe, but when all of that is figured out, you know, at that point, you know what is cost prohibitive and what is not. In the ordinance, to open up the possibility, we could, under the section that requires a second connection on, or a connection to Hybriteon Drive, we could say a connection to Hybriteon Drive or a second connection, you know, south of Lowe's. I think either way, it would satisfy what our goals of connectivity and dispersing traffic across the network would be. So I just thought I would offer that up to the group if you're concerned about that connection.
We're not, yeah, we're not in the final design stage. No. This is, this is preliminary.
Our decision is not, it's conceptual.
That's right, it's all conceptual, yeah.
Yep.
All right, anyone else that would like to?
Another quick question, is there plans to widen?
You have to come back here, we're on TV. Thank you.
The plans to widen Hybriteon Drive at that area, I mean, that's, we've seen the stakes out along the grass of people's property. Do you know if that's going to be a part of, or is that considered?
Wouldn't, don't know.
Okay, didn't know. That's why I'm asking, if y'all knew or not.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't either, that's why I'm asking. Cool, y'all don't know, good deal.
It's DOT, right?
Yeah, that would be a decision.
That's one of our roads.
That is not?
No.
Okay.
That's a, yeah, that's a state.
Okay.
It's not on the state.
Okay.
Since I'm here, I'm going to ask another question.
Go ahead.
Who controls all the stoplights in our city? DOT, right?
Depends.
It depends, yeah.
If it's a state-maintained road or if it's a city-maintained street, so that's the defining factor.
I've heard so many complaints from so many people about all the stoplights and the way they action, but nobody seems to have any input at the local level. Is that true? Nobody really has any input.
If it's 321 or 810, that's a DOT issue.
Yeah, it's all state.
We struggle with you trying to get things done there.
I understand, yeah, that's why I'm just trying to ask.
If it's a city street, then, then we have the, the latitude to look at that and study that and.
Oh, cool.
There's a process that we do.
The signals, the traffic signals.
Correct.
Excellent, I didn't know that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
If you'll come back up, yes, sir.
That's nothing to do with this, but.
Get it all out.
The city and the state, when it ices, where those pine trees are, is solid sheet of ice. The city don't clear at Hybriteon Drive, it says, it's state. But they clear all the neighborhood. But they clear all the neighborhoods, but nobody can get on the Highbright and Drive. They say, that's great, the neighborhoods are clear. We can't go anywhere because Highbright and Drive's a sheet of ice. So that's just a pet peeve of mine. So it's sort of silly. Because my neighbors are coming saying, our neighborhood looks great, but trucks, they pull their blades out and ride right, it's still ice.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We'll check into it. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. I will close the public hearing then, and I'll turn it over to council for any action questions, anything you'd like to?
I've got a question.
Please do.
Of, I don't know if it's gonna be Jenny or Radford's group, but several comments were made about the environmental situation there. And I'm curious to the developer or to Jenny, if you were aware of any kind of environmental Phase 1s that have been done on the site at this point.
Right. Not that I'm aware of, and he can clarify that, but as far as the stormwater are concerned with the water running down, a lot of that stuff could be fixed through design, you know, give the stormwater a place to go. This will be a Phase 2 stormwater project. They'll probably have to do some structural control measures in the various areas where there's more pavement. That issue that they've described is certainly a possible issue and something that they'll have to work through in their due diligence if there's some contamination out there. Overall, as far as like an area on the site, it's very small. So hopefully, it's relatively contained to that, that area.
Okay. Thank you.
But I couldn't tell you.
That's the next part of the phase, not what we're talking about tonight. That stormwater will be part of their planning phase.
Yep. Yep. They'll have to get stormwater, they'll have to do the stormwater permitting pretty much when they do the plat because the density drives the stormwater requirements and they would have to reserve land, you know, within that plat to be held in common for any sort of structural control measures. So their next steps really is to figure that out.
Such as retention bonds and such.
Yep. That's what, they used to call them BMPs and now they call them SCMs, you know, alphabet soup, of course.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
So in the mornings, I use Highbright and Drive to take my daughter to school. And I know that that is a road that we do not control because it's DOT, but there is a lot of back and forth traffic, there's a lot of stopping. When it comes time to approve access points and things like that, DOT will have control of that road, but what kind of say do we have in that intersection with that road?
So the way this zoning is written, that connection has to happen. If you wanted to change that, the first thing to do would be tonight on page three of the conditional zoning ordinance under subsection 11A. We've got to change the language a little bit to add some flexibility to allow for another access point that's not Highbright, if you wanted to consider denying that connection. DOT is going to look at the geometry of it and they might require, okay, you can connect, but you have to do a deceleration lane or you have to straighten this curve or something. I mean, they could require conditions that would be within the right-of-way or off their property even, depending on what they're seeing as the impacts, you know. Obviously, you know, a new road is gonna have impacts, but 1,000 trips versus 200 trips, you know, makes a difference in what they would require. So the city's rules and DOT's rules both have to be met. But if you adopt the ordinance as presented, you couldn't next time then say, no, you can't have that connection because you'd be basically going against the law we just adopted, right? So we would want to change that.
It's premature. You do?
And I think it would be, I would say that it's fine either way from staff perspective if you wanted to add, you know, some flexibility under, you know, 11A to have that connection to the south of Lowe's as an alternative to Highbright.
But the developer has stated that that's cost prohibitive.
Yep. So when we're in the conceptual zoning realm, like my advice is always to sort of say, well, it's cost prohibitive, but if it's cost prohibitive to straighten Highbright and Drive or do what DOT wants done to make it a safe connection, perhaps there's another conversation that can be had on an alternative, you know? Maybe it's a publicly dedicated road and he doesn't have to buy the whole parcel. Maybe it serves, you know, the development that's coming. Perhaps it sells in the interim and you've got a different player to work with. So long-term, you know, we would build in the possibilities that we would want, you know, within this approval. It does lend itself to sort of a looped-around connection if you kind of look at where the parcels are. I mean, I see the logic in what the community is saying. So that'd be up to this group to sort of leave that as a possibility or not.
Yeah. It sounds like the possibility would be to make an amendment to add flexibility to what could be done there into this first conceptual plan. That's what I'm.
I think adding flexibility might be a good thing because you may find out that Highbright and Drive is cost prohibitive or more costly than buying another piece of property because you have to straighten the road and that would be up to the developer, not us, of course, but.
Yeah, 11A, section one, it says today, access from the road behind Lowe's and access from Highbright and Drive is required. You could say, and access from Highbright and Drive or a secondary connection south of Lowe's is required, something like that.
And that wording as it is stands too rigid, ties it in.
So you're saying adding?
We need to, we need to put that language in to meet the needs of the developer, but we also don't want to do that at the expense of our citizens who've been there for years.
Generally, it's good traffic management to have as many, like diversified points of access as possible. So if somebody's trying to go down to the new Whittnall interchange or something on Highbright and Drive, they can exit and go that way and stay off 321. The idea would be to sort of try to not funnel all the traffic to 321. So it's a little less desirable in that sense going to the south of Lowe's, but it still does disperse from like going on McLean Drive or directly to 321, you know, might take some trips off McLean and make it easier to make those turning movements, so, you know.
You know, it just seems like the McLean Drive extension and the 321 South is better than dumping traffic onto the old Highbright and Drive.
Yep.
Which already has a lot of traffic.
It's definitely a substandard street for width and it's a curvier street, you know, DOT is doing these modernization projects to straighten up roads like that, but DOT is also like very underfunded from what happened with gas taxes and telecommuting during COVID and all that, so.
We need to give the developers options.
I think so.
So we don't tie their hands.
I think so. But I think it would be hard to just prohibit it, given that they've got the frontage today. Although you could through this process, in theory, do that as a condition, if he agrees to it.
All right. So what you have put in there, council, does anyone have a feeling about that, changing the wording, what Jenny has said there?
I think it's appropriate for the flexibility.
Yeah, I think it gives more flexibility.
Okay. Well, I have a little note here and I guess as a matter of process, you could vote on that as an amendment before you do the whole vote. If anybody wants.
Was that the way to do it, vote on his amendment? All right. Any other questions or concerns, council, before we, and whenever you're ready, we'll, what we need to do, I guess, is to vote on the amendment.
I'd like to hear it again.
Yeah, we'll let her read it again. Vote on the amendment to, and then that will be added to the change and we'll vote on the whole, the whole change.
Can you state it?
Will you state that amendment again, please?
One of the rules of conditional zoning is the developers have to agree, so I just wanted to make sure that I didn't just agree to something for them, but they're good with that. So on page three of the conditional zoning ordinance, subsection 11A, the section one would now read, access from the road behind Lowe's and access from Highbright and Drive or a secondary connection south of Lowe's is required.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I want to hear it one more time.
Come up here and tell him.
See, or look at it.
Yeah, access from the road behind Lowe's and access from Highbright and Drive or a secondary connection south of Lowe's is required.
Okay.
I could say connection to 321.
It may be the side street, though.
It could be the side street, exactly, because it might not be all, yeah, so.
Right.
Okay.
The only access as planned is on the Lowe's rear entrance road, not McLean Drive extension.
Correct.
For section one.
As it is.
There are other ones. If we could put the map back up, we could look at where the points are. And when we bring the preliminary plat through, that will not be Lowe's rear access road. We're gonna propose a new name, anything else.
Is that the one you wanted back up?
Yep. So this is section one. Here's the little stubout, like the access road. In theory, this really could be extended and kind of come down around and kind of connect in here and this development could connect in at any point to that on a secondary point instead of this. Or have three and do this one and this one anyway. But that little point there connects in and then this point here is from where the public road ends today. Other points on McLean, there would be something aligned generally with this existing entrance for Huntington Woods for section three. And then section one is going to have to have a connection probably somewhere around here, and this is the clubhouse parcel, which would also have access. So there would be some new curb cuts on McLean Drive as well.
All right. Any other questions or comments or anything?
We need a motion on the amendment.
We need a motion on the amendment to, that will be added to the ordinance as requested.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment as read.
As presented, yeah.
As presented.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? You heard the motion from Councilmember Restwood? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. All right, now, we have the ordinance with the new amendment in it to be considered, so I will entertain either other comments, questions, or a motion to, for the amend, I mean, for the ordinance as presented.
This, this conditional zoning district is consistent with the plan that we've all approved, the, our plan for development, comprehensive plan. And then I think, if I'm not mistaken, our second priority for the last several years has been housing.
Right.
Trying to get affordable housing, different types of housing, market rate housing here, and I think this fits with that as well. I'll be happy, I'll make a motion that item A, public hearing for the conditional zoning district, be approved.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Perdue. Based on the statement. Based on the statement below, which I've already read. You don't want me to read that again, I hope. Thank you.
And the amendment that was just passed.
And the amendment that was passed to go with this ordinance. This is for CZ9 conditional zoning as presented and the statement as presented as well. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously as well. Thank y'all. Thank you very much for bringing that to us and good luck with everything. Thank you, everybody that was here with that tonight. I thought we were getting ready to hang meat there a minute, surely. Okay, we'll move on then to.
That's what I'm, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Thank y'all.
We're working with them to. Road situation.
All right. We will move on then to item B of our, we're still under matter scheduled for a hearing. This is an ordinance amendment. This will be the first reading. This hearing will be held for the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 13 of the Lenora City Code to add Article 5 Downtown Social District, directing the staff to prepare a management and maintenance plan and detailed map and providing for severability, codification, and an effective date as submitted. We'll recommend approval of the ordinance following the final passage. So we're voting on it tonight and then we will bring it back and vote on it in the final passage, I guess, in two weeks on that. So I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address the council concerning this amendment.
Those folks here are for and those folks are against.
Looks like the fours are pretty good tonight. So anyone want to have any comments, concepts? Jenny, Matthew, anyone would like to speak concerning this at all? Any questions from the council, I guess, concerning anything that you?
We've had several, several presentations on it, so I think we're clear on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's any questions or anything, and any comments from anyone? Fine. I'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to council for any action to be taken. This is for the first reading of it and we'll vote on the pass. If we pass that, then we'll move on to the final in two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this ordinance as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Thomas to approve the ordinance titled Downtown Social District, amending chapter 13 of our code and Article 5. And is there any other question? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously, so we're on the way. Thank y'all for being here. You're welcome to stay as long as you want to.
Go get your hot dog.
You've had a civics lesson so far.
All right. Our next item is item C, which is an amendment. This is to the Lenora City Code, section 114. This is for a 20 mile per hour speed limit. We'll hold a hearing to adopt the 20 mile an hour speed limit by resolution for the entire lengths of Pinewood Street Northeast, Glenwood Street Northeast, what's that?
Glenview.
Oh, I'm sorry. Glenview Street Northeast, Circle Drive Northeast and Ridgecrest Drive Northeast, allowing for posting at the discretion of the Public Works Operations Manager, which is our man who runs many miles, as submitted. Note the following approval. These streets will be listed, no, that's, that's not the man who runs, that's the other guy. That's Radford's job, under appendix B of the Code of Ordinance, section 114. 20 mile an hour speed limit on the following streets as submitted. I will open the public hearing and open it up for any discussion concerning this 20 miles per hour in this neighborhood. This is in the Laurel Creek section of Lenora. There has been some issues of all kind of things coming through there, trucks and all that. And we've done a number of things. Our Public Works and Department is, and our police and everyone has done a great job of working toward that, but, you know, sometimes it's kind of hard to patrol that all the time. So this, hopefully, will help this situation if this is what we decide to do, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I live close to this neighborhood and I absolutely agree that this is a good change for that area. The streets are very narrow compared to a lot of other streets in the city because it's a very old section. There's some tight turns, some tight curves, and this should really help that neighborhood in multiple ways.
Sounds like a motion to me.
Are you making, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item C as presented.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Beal to, for the approval of the amendment of the Lenora City Code, section 114, concerning 20 mile per hour speed limit in the streets that which we read just a few minutes ago.
Is this the first of this?
No. This is it, yeah. This is it. All right. No other questions, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. All right. I believe that ends our matter scheduled for public hearing this evening. So we'll move on to, if I can get my agenda to open, to consent agenda items consisting of minutes of the council meeting on Tuesday, September 6th. Item B is the capital project budget ordinance. This is for EPA Brownfields Grant Number Two Project. This is a request, the city council adopt this capital project budget ordinance for the EPA Brownfields Grant Two, Number Two, project in amount of $500,000 as submitted. And item C is a budget amendment for the building reuse grant. This is for Exela Pharma Sciences LLC. This is a request for approval of the budget amendment for the building reuse grant for Exela Pharma Sciences in the amount of $500,000 as submitted. The grant application was authorized on March 2nd, 2021. So that's A, B, and C. I'll open it up for any discussion and/or motion from the council.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
A motion for Councilmember Purdue to present, to approve the consent agenda items, A, B, and C as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to requests and petitions of any citizens. Jennifer, you're still here. If you want to make any request, you have the floor. Or anyone who would like to address the council tonight. All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight you have the 2023 holiday schedule in your pack, and also the 2023 city council meeting schedule. Typically, we have you go back and adopt that this evening. There is a couple conflicts there, but as you know, some of these meetings get changed due to weather, especially like the city summit, league, those type of things. They've been moved to the spring. But otherwise, your schedule there, also your schedule for the National League of Cities, the city summit, and the congressional cities, I think is on there as well. So typically, you go back and adopt that, and that way you know for your schedule for next year what meeting dates will be.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager. It has all the holiday, 2023 holiday schedule, the 2023 city council's meeting schedule, and the other various North Carolina League, North Carolina League of Municipalities, I mean, National League of Cities, and all the calendar involved with that. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of these, of these schedules.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve those two 2023 schedules as submitted.
And the others that were also submitted as well. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Presswood makes a motion to approve the schedules as presented for 2023. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Go ahead.
Several other items for information this evening. As you know, after this meeting, we have police night out up on the square in downtown and invite everybody to attend that. Also, the ABC board will meet on Thursday, October 6th at 2:00. The city county service committee will meet on Monday, October 10th at noon. The Cobble County Economic Development Commission will meet on Tuesday, October 11th at 8:00 a.m., and that'll be at the Civic Center. Lenore Tourism Development Authority will meet on Thursday, October 13th, 4:00, Third Floor City Hall. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, October 13th, 6:00 p.m., Third Floor City Hall. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, October 17th, 6:00 p.m., and that's out at the Optimus, no, Mulberry, I believe that, right, Mulberry Rack Department. Also, one stop voting begins on Thursday, October 20th through Friday, November 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And Saturday, November 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's held at the Cobble County Resource Center, also known as a library at 120 Hospital Avenue. And lastly, I would like to mention that we're having the down, well, two things. The Wood, Fire, Smoke Festival will be held on Saturday, October 8th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in downtown and run until 7:00 p.m. that evening. Also, the downtown trick or treating and Matt Hatter's pumpkin patch parade will be held on Friday, October 28th, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. And we're having a drive-through trunk or treat on Monday, October 31st, 5:00 p.m., and that's at the MLK Center. Kaylin, am I missing anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That's good to me. I was looking for it. I had it pulled up on my app, but so thanks for adding that.
Okay. I think that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Yeah, the Wood, Fire, Smoke is this weekend. Also, that night is the dinner for, will be recognized, the Main Street and Givens Awards winners for the last two years. We get to do that since COVID had kind of splat that around on us. So we'll be recognized those. So if you can attend the dinner, please do so. And I encourage department heads and council members to do that. It is a fundraiser for our downtown alliance, which is going, going well, and is going to be a good part for helping our city in many, many ways. So please do that. It's our first chance at a fundraiser for that. So we'd encourage that to go on. Would say thanks for the, quickly for the weekend. The, the Lenore High School reunion was this weekend. I want to thank our city staff for a lot of help there in putting things together. The band concert, unfortunately, was, was canceled at the last minute because of Hurricane Ian. We really were sad about that. It was going to be a great event, a great night. Had the over 300 people that were coming, and unfortunately, we will try to reschedule that, I think, is what they're talking about at some point in time. See if they can come another time. But again, thank you, especially all those that helped with everything about putting that together for this past weekend. A lot of good things were going on with it. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendation for our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you.
You do want me to mention?
Yeah.
Okay.
You do have something.
Yes. Well, Scott said I could maybe wait, but I'll go ahead and tell you now, since he thinks I should. The North Carolina Utilities Commission yesterday approved our purchase of Joyston Water Works. So now we, now it's back to the lawyers to work out all the details in terms of the deeds and the money and the bill of sale and all that stuff. But they actually approved it pretty quickly. I think we started applying in May, so.
That's good.
They didn't really have any major concerns, so we're good to go.
And I just mentioned again, the purchase price was $80,000, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, be kind to us on that with all the negotiation going on there.
I'll get it done as efficiently and as quickly as I possibly can.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I do have a, some board announcements will be coming, hopefully, but I'd like to announce that we do have some openings on our, and vacancies on our city authorities' boards and commissions. So if you know anyone interested, please have them fill out a application to be a part of that and turn it into Shirley Cannon, our city clerk, or to City Hall in any way. And we'll take a look at that. But we do have some openings on several different boards right now, and then we're, we're considering those as we move forward. So please keep that in your thoughts, if you will. All right. Anything from any of our council members that would need to be brought up? Keep, Councilmember Perkins is not with us tonight. He's still recovering from his surgery on his knee, and he's doing well. I talked to him today, but the doctor told him that he needed to be a little slower about moving around, coming to things like that. So he decided he better take it easy and follow his doctor's orders. So anyway, we'll keep him in our thoughts and prayers as well. So if there's nothing else to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.